Order at like six oh four. Yeah. Just first little note, I sound a little congested or coughing time to time because I'm sick with a cold. But the testing has shown it to just be a cold and apparently those are spreading around quite vociferously these days, so. Um, welcome. Thank you, board members, members of the public for coming to listen to this discussion. Like to say at the outset that nobody wants to be here discussing this topic. Much rather be talking about individualized learning plans for every student. Mastery learning regardless of your age, affordable next steps. An alumni program to learn about how successful our graduates. Instead, if I can speak to you now, talking about what are we going to do? Try to keep our schools open in person for the entire school year. The principal point of discussion is to address whether or not pool testing or surveillance testing is is something that we want to consider adding to our toolbox for COVID mitigations. It was something that our task force reopening task force had originally considered as part of the draft. And then it was removed from the draft and so the Indian Board never had an opportunity to discuss it amongst themselves and it's a public input. And so that's purpose for our meeting. And I my role here is really to facilitate the discussion and to hear what our fellow board members think and then we'll have that discussion and then we will entertain public comment once the public has had an opportunity to hear what our discussion is about. We have a duty under the law as school board to provide a clean, healthy and safe learning environment for all students. COVID-19 pandemic continues today threatens our responsibility to be under the law. There are we want to have an in-person learning experience for every student that lasts as long as we can muster and that is a safe and healthy environment for everyone. There are certain protocols and mitigations that are unavailable to us. Either because they've been prohibited by law, such as requiring vaccines. It's not a tool that we can put in our toolbox. We can socially distance like we did last year because we don't have the funding for tents. They have outside classrooms. We don't have the funding or quite frankly, the wherewithal mentally to offer dual modalities of both in-person and remote learning simultaneously at the same time. To give everyone a choice as to whether whether they want to be at school or not. We don't have a ability to contact trace. It's 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 the only part control of our students when they're here, we have no control over what they do outside here and that would be basically a futile effort. And we have no control of the protocols, procedures and activities of anyone when they're not in not at school. So those are some of the things that we can't do. Some of the things that we can do are we can have no school and to go all in remote. We learned lessons last year that we could do that. We don't want to do that. We can require masks of everyone. We prefer not to do that, but we may have to do that as part of the tool or our toolbox. We can try to limit contacts during school day, such as having lunch outside of a cafeteria. We can try to limit traffic directions and traffic patterns during exchanges of 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 classrooms. We can try to enable certain classes to go outside if that's abusive to their work. We can enable some groups to meet and offer an opportunity for limited social distancing in some of our larger spaces like our library, our gymnasium and our theater. One of the challenges here is to figure out how serious this risk is. A lot of uncertainties in in the world these days, depending on who you're listening to, you may feel passionately about one form of mitigation versus another. We don't know quite how a Delta variant is affecting children, although we know it's affecting children more than previous variants. Some places in the country, that's becoming a problem. We know that there are more opportunities for breakthrough cases for vaccinated people, although those still seem to be quite quite few. So having that ability to to test our students on some frequency, what we did turn is a is a program that's fully funded by the government that would cost our taxpayers nothing, would offer us an ability to gather careful data on our actual COVID case count in our schools and be able to react accordingly. Those are some of the benefits of a testing program. Some of the negatives, the detractors of a testing program is that you have questions about the reliability of the data. You have questions about about what do you do in the case of positive test results. You have questions about the social emotional effects of students who are you worrying about testing, who may be worrying about the results. Who may feel pressure to participate or not participate in a testing program. And we're here to, the fellow board members, to decide whether or not we want to include this in our toolbox of COVID mitigation. Strategies and tactics. So I'd like to maybe just offer it up for commentary by our school board members, if anyone has anything to contribute about their impressions on whether testing as a concept is something that we should consider. The mic's falling for this room or for the public to leave. Okay. Let me ask, let me ask a question. Suppose we asked if we could do a testing program. Parameters and choices that we could make to implement that. One would be to test all students who opt in as an option on some frequency. As if that's a pool test, meaning a high school, you can imagine it might be in a advisory with 12 students plus an adult. That is the program that is is part of the funded program that that implements it. That would be the way that would go down here in our school. That program would yield, it resulted about 24 hours. And what you do with the data is a matter of of our decision. One question about this, that's sort of a fundamental question beyond just whether we conclude this as a part of our testing or part of our COVID mitigation. Is to decide whether or not we would require certain students to participate or whether this would be a hot in strategy. Feedback from board members on that point, whether requiring students or thinking to opt in. That from what I understand, if we legal standpoint, we could require this of police adults. Could require this of those engaged in extracurricular activities. We could not require academic home students. I want to say for the record that I'm by outlining this for the discussion. It's not an expression of my personal opinion of that. These are the options that we have to to decide whether or not we're going to deploy this resource or not. I'm going to for a feedback comment, a question, a discussion point on the notion of whether or not either A, that this concept is something that we should seriously consider. And B, if so, that under what circumstances would it be deployed? Please.
What scientific evidence do you have to support asymptomatic symptomatic testing of vaccinated and unvaccinated?
Well, that's a good question and it's not whether I have the data, to be honest with you. I'm not I'm a layperson like everyone else in the room unless you're an epidemiologist. I don't I don't have that information. Personally. Personally, my opinion on the matter is that gathering as a notion, gathering empirical data to form decision making is 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 helpful. I think that with respect to asymptomatic transmission, we don't know really if the science is emerging on that. There are asymptomatic transmission of people who've been vaccinated. The extent of that, the rate of that, how that may increase in the future or decrease in the future, I don't think that is quite known.
My question was also asymptomatic testing.
Asymptomatic testing?
Yes.
In terms of what?
We're proposing that students are tested when they have enough symptoms of COVID.
My understanding of the testing regime is that a pool test would be a PCR test, which has the ability to detect asymptomatic cases. One of the limitations of a follow-on individualized rapid test, an antigen test, which has a higher incidence of not detecting asymptomatic cases. That could be a very big problem in terms of our ability to gather valid data.
Okay. Have you looked into what the Hampshire Department of Health and Community Services suggest for asymptomatic positive testing?
How much do you understand?
There is very little guidance because they don't recommend testing without symptoms on the Hampshire Department of Health and Community Services and the CDC. From what I'm not, I'm not a medical expert, but from what I tried to find out. So I think we have a problem with testing students with no symptoms. I realize this is a difficult area and a lot of people are very sensitive about it, but there's not a lot of for all the work that we do. It's not recommended.
So one of the things, I'm listening to the reopening task force. One of the things that a guy from the old bio work said was when they've done this pool testing, they usually have less than 1% hit rate. It's a lot of work and asking a lot of students for that usually low statistic. I would hope that parents would say, if my kid's not feeling well, they have any sort of fever, wake up with whatever, that they are going to be proactive and not send their kid to school. I mean, the idea of the testing is to be proactive. But I think the idea of a hit rate is not going to help us with the amount of work and effort before. I think testing the whole student populations, I'm not, I don't think this is the way to go.
I think we have a piece of cognitive dissonance here. Laura cites the state saying, don't test asymptomatic people. As I understand it, the state is recommending we do full testing for asymptomatic students. That's where we have this contract. Two different messages from the state. I know the don't test asymptomatic was an early guidance, so unless it's been reiterated, this is the most recent guidance. There's that.
Today. I was looking at the CDC website today.
Today.
And I looked at the
Oh, absolutely. I I I don't doubt that that fresh lines. Questions, how old is it? Has it been updated correctly? Someone else in the state is saying do this with asymptomatic students. So Stephanie's went about it being a lot of effort and rousing results. When I read the documents, it's 15 minutes a week to get a sample.
But I I so think you're going to get, you're going to have the kids swabs of it. At the base school, we could do it in an advisory. So yeah, could we do it quickly? Yes. Then they're going to run around the school and get the results the next day. The question is, what do you do with that result? Now you've got kids all over the place. There's the next step, right? But I just think if you're talking less than 1% hit rate. I would like advisors to be taken out, probably checking with the kids.
Yeah, please.
I want to say, I don't want to step on anyone else. The 1% hit rate is has to be essentially pre delta, pre large scale school testing. Don't just new and since schooled it out. So we don't know there's going to be what's going to be in the form of whether that's going to be a true or not. We don't know.
Sorry, but pool testing is not a new thing. So for instance, many colleges use it. So so the the idea that Stephanie is using is is many institutions that did attempt to minimize their COVID policies that way. So we haven't done it here, but other people did. Mike?
Yes, please.
So my thought is we have if if there was any sort of testing was going to happen, I would want to wait until we hit like an an orange headed into red so we can maybe figure out what's going on. Or if we were already aware we were shut down and we're trying to get kids back into school. If we then talk to parents like, hey, would you opt into testing order? Get our kids back in class, get them back in school? Would you opt in? Then I think I could see people saying, yeah, I get that. I want my kid back to school. But where we are today, based on the factors, looking at Adam's draft, which we're going to thoroughly discuss more, I guess, on Thursday. We're not anywhere close.
Currently.
Currently, we're not anywhere close. So it's hard to say the kids and the kids have been all around each other all summer. They're working over at Market Basket, but we're going to hold these. Although I have to say, and you look at the thing, now we're up to, you know, 18 cases in our town from 11, 40 ago. What is going to be the increasing rate knowing we have football players going to camp? With multiple other schools with absolutely no protocols in place whatsoever, is there anything that could happen? That's where the idea of does testing make sense before it comes back to the school? That's where I'm conflicted. But I think just testing the school and if we're going to open and bring the over. I would like to see the advisories take the time and check and see how it fits. I would like to see the advisories take the time and check and see how to fix this.
First question, so, okay, Steve?
So, I, to, to debate testing is to debate whether or not we might get a, a single data point. Question is, what are we going to do with that? So, question for Adam is, have you had any thoughts about, let's say unlucky pool 13 comes back with a positive result, what happens then?
Yes, please, Adam.
Sure. So, in that scenario, if a pool two comes back positive, part of the policy of the school has to be what we do in response to that. And typically, the process promoted by the company who has the contract with the state is to do antigen rapid tests for those students. If you follow the science closely, you understand the trap, the problem with that. Antigen tests are not great with asymptomatic cases. But nevertheless, a parent would have a choice of either having their child get their own PCR test on their own or being out of school for a period of time to prove that they're not a carrier of that, of that case. Those are the three options.
Does that affect the entire pool?
Yes.
You're saying you would take all 10 kids or whatever? Happily, 10 isn't a pool, is that right?
It's, it's a varying number, it doesn't have to be 10. But that's, that's what the testing company, that's what they recommend for protocol. You have a positive pool test, that you follow up testing with everybody in that pool.
So if you opt for pool testing, you're essentially opting to require other testing at some point?
Or option three was, here's a test and, and quarantine yourself, basically, is that what I heard you say, George?
Let's be clear, though. So, no one, I don't recommend anyone being required to take a test. I don't require, I don't support the requirement that anybody tests at all. That's not something that I support. However, if a parent opts into testing, they're not just opting into a pool test, they'd be opting into follow-on testing as well, should their student, their child, be part of a positive pool test result.
And if they're asymptomatic, it's at their own expense when they go to the doctor, is my understanding?
If they don't want to take an antigen rapid test at the school, which would be free, they wanted to get their own PCR test outside of school, then that would be at their own expense, correct?
I have another question.
Yes, go ahead.
We have students in the high school that are vaccinated. And the CDC and the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services does not appear to recommend testing vaccinated individuals. They're, they're, even if they test positive, the CDC website today said, "Wear a mask for a week, 20, 40 days." They may be quarantined if you're vaccinated and you test positive. And that's the CDC, like, I'm not a medical expert. I'm trying to look and see other people that have guidance.
My reaction to that is, "That's wonderful news." Problem for our management is that we don't know who's vaccinated, and we can't know. Unless somebody voluntarily disposes of that information, no, we don't know, and we can't know what that is. So, from a management standpoint, it seems like that it's not really a tool in the toolbox to follow that level of guidance, because that guidance requires, you know, the vaccination status of the person for whom the, the solution is to just put on a mask. Or we're sort of hamstrung in that sense.
Well, unless you trust your parents and you trust your people.
Do what?
That your parents know if their kid is vaccinated or not. Your parents know if they should be sent into school or not. Your parents know if they should wear a mask or not. I think part of the problem in the opening, you mentioned the word "control" quite a few times, and I think that we have to, we do have to trust our parents with some of that control.
No, I wouldn't object to that, I support that 100%, in the sense that we all need to take personal responsibility for protecting ourselves, protecting others. I don't, I mean, so we have an obligation to control, I'll use it again, what we can control. We control the safety of entry to the building, we control the safety of building up or down. You know, we have protocols for, for COVID. If somebody gets sick, there's a procedure, or, or evaluating that person, getting them out of the school, getting them healthy again. So that's part of our obligation. I, I wish, I'd hope, and I think we should make it part of our mission to encourage positive personal responsibility among the people that we can influence. So, but it's, it's, you know, you know, we're taking on bait with that, that, so here's kind of one of the, the advantages of doing something like this means that you can be a little bit ahead of the situation. And if there is something coming our way, you have an ability to nip it in the bud before it shuts the whole school down. Disadvantage is that, yeah, you are introducing a burden on the people that they may not like, may not choose to participate in. I mean, we could put this whole thing out there as an optional, opt-in thing, and no one could participate. It doesn't, that's, that's a risk. And then, even if you had just a few people participating, it wouldn't be very meaningful because you're not really doing the, the type of, you didn't get the type of data that you wanted to get to make the help in one of these decisions. Stephanie, can I?
Well, my only comment is, I mean, we do have, again, we haven't discussed or voted on any of Adam's reopening document, but he has different factors in that table out there helping to make the status. So, there is a status that we go to wear masks, but we have that discussion. So there is something in place that we can do, and I just think about, I mean, Delta is different, yes, we know that. But, you know, last year, when I think about the number of cases in school, it was really, really well. It was managed well. I think if, you know, we saw something happening in the school, I would immediately say, "Get your masks on. Let's, let's nip this in the bud." I don't know, I just worry about that, or think about that less than 1% act, you know, I would say act 1% hit rate of testing, and I just, again, it's not even 10%. You're, you're talking 1% or less, right? Because of less than 1%?
You said 1 out of 150.
So it's less than 1%.
Do they know how well that tracks with community data? Is it, is it pretty close?
I don't know that.
We don't know that. Because if it was a good surrogate of community data, then it makes community data more reliable as an indicator. It's a little bit more lagging than it's in empirical data, but, so, it is, it is something useful. And I know, I know that community data is part of your, your rubric for general reopening, safe, safe, that's cool. Go ahead. Yes, Steve?
So, Stephanie and I were down the line last year. I think we survived quite well, but the price we paid for that is, at the slightest hint of potential infection, there was a lot of quarantine going on to be pulled out. We followed that same methodology this year, makes sense, I think, by my Delta. We might see a lot of people being quarantined unnecessarily.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, one thing that's changed this year is the New Hampshire DHHS guidelines for quarantine have changed seismically. So, now the, the requirement for quarantine is for only someone who lives within the same household as someone who is positive, a positive case. So, this school year, one student in a class tests positive, there would be no quarantining of fellow students, whereas of last year, there was. That's a pretty significant shift.
That's huge. In a good way.
We're a little bit, I think, playing into fears of what might happen down the road versus where we are today and what's happening in New Hampshire. So we're looking at the news and we're looking at, well, these seem to happen in Texas or New Hampshire, or Florida, but this isn't Texas or Florida, the New Hampshire, New Hampshire, whole country town with lots of room, and a very big school. I know we talked about social distancing is difficult. This is a big school, this building is big, and, and I talked with Don earlier, and he mentioned it, of, of using our big spaces in a really useful way. I don't know what you've already done, I'm sure you thought of this, but if there's a class needs to spread out, move to the theater. Like, what, whatever you need to do to organically and naturally do it, I think it's, it's not like we can't meet together again when, when there, you know, there's a little more cause for concern than to sort of reactively. We're talking about a population that, by my understanding correctly, they've already begun to meet, and they're already doing their things that they do. And now we're saying, "Listen, guys, nothing has really changed in New Hampshire, but we want to change what we're doing with you." I mean, these kids have been sleeping over each other's houses all summer. Presumably, they've all been exposed and they're all going to be just fine this year. That's my, my hope, that they're all healthy and have some antibodies we don't know about. But whether that's true or not, I don't know. But to go backwards without any community data at all, our hospitals aren't overwhelmed. Even in the big cities, the cases are not, I don't, I mean, even Manchester, I looked, but I don't remember. They, the whole state, they were like, I'll let Stephanie find it. I don't want to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I'm of the opinion that follow CDC and New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services guidance, right? This is, this is what has led us, guidance from these organizations will lead us to the, the protocols that we put in place. If they're not saying that, you know, we need to start implementing testing for a small percentage possibility, then I think we should do it. Yeah, I agree with Chris, you know, if things start to change in such a way, and hopefully it's something that you see coming, not that, you know, anybody has a crystal ball necessarily, but if there's going to be some more data that shows that something like this needs to be implemented, then, you know, we can discuss at that, at that point. But to be overly premature about it, I don't particularly, I'm not behind that. I put a lot of, not a lot of trust, let me put it this way. I don't trust government organizations blindly. However, when the CDC and, you know, New Hampshire DHHS have way more doctors and disease experts than, you know, and knowledge than I'll ever have in any of those, then, you know, who am I, and, you know, probably the rest of us, for that matter, are we to, you know, second guess them? I, you know, I gotta go with, with the experts and do the research.
I agree with him, but again, as I said before, I say, well, completely now, this is federal money to do this. Some of the federal government said, "Let's make this happen for K-12 schools." The state then had to say, "Yeah, we're in, we'll administer it, it's ours." So some of the state also said, "Yeah, this is a good idea, we're going to make this happen." So it's not like the government's saying, "No, no, 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 no." With the whole flow from Washington down to this room is set up saying, "Yes, yes, yes." That, that's, that's the observable fact.
Yes, and it's, you know, and it, you know, our governor in our state has put it on us. So, how are we going to manage our local school now? You know, and so here we are, you know, I mean, you know, and, and here we are. The reason we're here today and not waiting until August 26th at our regularly scheduled meeting is because if we're going to do something, then we needed to discuss it. Do we have questions? Do we need some time to get answers? Do we need to train people? Do we need to implement? Or, or, or if there's nothing to do, at least we know now, and it's not a big surprise to be there before school starts. It's a sensible thing to do is to be today and have this discussion and, and figure out what we're going to do as a collective. Because, you know, I'm, you know, I personally, you know, I mean, I recognize the benefits. There are limitations, it's, it's, it's fraught with, you know, emotion, and, and there's legitimate and concerns about how students will react, and how people may choose or not to choose, their social, emotional risks and benefits. I mean, might make some people feel really comfortable to know the school is collecting empirical data and that it would feel really good to go to school. Might otherwise give some other people some anxiety. I mean, this is not easy. So, it works to come upon us to have the discussion, at least in the first instance, and to see what, what we think, and where we, what questions we may need to have answered, what research we need to instruct our superintendent, his team to do on our app, and be on the behalf of our people. Hold on a second, Steve, George?
Yeah, so I kind of see both sides of the coin. You know, I'm usually pretty conservative when it comes to a lot of this stuff. But I, and I wanted to hear some feedback before I kind of share my thoughts. I think right now, given the current environment, with the testing, I think it has to be an option. I don't think that this is for, right now, assigned testing, other than if, wherever certain other. Numbers just aren't there exactly. And I'm very conservative, I'm, you know, I have a daughter that, you know, has some issues. I wear the mask, and, you know, I stay 20 feet away from people, you know, everything like that. But, you know, given that, I don't think right now it's important. Ask me in a couple of weeks, and I'll say, "Look, the number, and I'm leaving the other side of the fence." Kind of assess, and that's the view. I think we take the most conservative approach at this point, given the data that we have right now. I may come back in a couple of weeks or a month, but I, I don't think that's important.
Fair, thanks. Yes.
So, two questions. For Adam, is optional an option?
Yes.
If, let's say, we chose not to participate at all at this moment, but circumstances changed in October, could we opt in at that point because, helped, compelled because of given circumstances?
Yes.
Oh, just to clarify, does that mean that this program that's fully funded, is that fully funded for this academic year? Is that what that means? So, to Steve's point, if it was November, January, March, or some other more distant future?
Yeah, I believe it's a block grant, and it was, I believe, $41 or $46 million for the entire state. As of right now, there's only two school districts that have begun doing it. And so I have no concern of the state running out of funds for this place.
Yes, definitely.
So, I mean, I, I'm very much for Georgia, so I'm not for it unless we see trends in a really bad direction, a bad place, as I said, we're heading, and we're heading in the orange, red, let's get out of red, that sort of thing. At this point, I'd be interested if we just, if we take a straw poll and see if we want to continue discussing where we are at this point. So, we're not just talking.
Before we take a straw poll, I'm wondering, just because of the agenda that we put out, if we might listen to these people first?
Yeah, I was just going to say that, that's a great idea, yeah. I just, anybody else on the board have any further comment at this time? We'll wait to hear public comment. Say none, go over the floor for public comment. Go ahead, come on up. Yeah, is there a chair there, please? Just for the record.
Yeah, but your name is Donna Resin.
Sure.
Ten Cat Fondue, New Hampshire. So, this is very interesting, listening to this. I'm a regulatory scientist. I've been in the pharmaceutical industry for, since 1995, so, yeah. I started out in drug product manufacturing, and I moved into what's called regulatory affairs. And in the pharmaceutical industry, those are the people who work with the government agencies like the FDA, EMA, and the European Health Canada to get a drug approved or into clinical trials. I've personally gotten 24 drugs into clinical trials. I've gotten three, three drugs approved, two with the FDA, and one with the Health Canada and the EMA. As, when you go to get a drug approved, you have to test to make sure that that is the drug that you're actually testing for and releasing and putting it to, into the
drug that you're actually testing for and releasing and putting it to, into the population. So there's all kinds of baskets, which is gastroentography, all kinds of things like that, that test for the active ingredient of the drug. And you create a reference standard that's the ultimately pure part of the drug to use to test against. So keep that in mind as I go through this. This is the C D C's P C R test manual, right off their website. Do you guys think that it tests for the virus? It doesn't. It tests for ribonuclease acid. So it tests for RNA from the virus. Do you think that it can test specifically for the Delta variant? It cannot. Positive tests are set to C D C, C D C then further analyzes those based on genetic strains that they pulled out of people who've tested positive or something new that they've seen and then they say, okay, this person has the Delta variant. So there is a lag between a person getting a P C R test and getting notified if it's the Delta variant or the Lambda variant or the Omega variant or whatever the hell they come up with next. Where am I going with this? So to go back to this assay though, the assay tests for RNA, right? And RNA is a very small portion of the virus. How many coronaviruses are there out there? Influenza is a coronavirus, the cold is a coronavirus. There's a lot of coronaviruses out there. So when you test something, that there's a lot of potential genetic material on a person's body already from antibody development, things like that, you're going to get hits and you're going to get what's called a false positive. So that's when you can have a person, perfectly normal person walking around feeling great, all of a sudden you get a random pool sample test and it comes back positive because that person had had influenza B last year. Who knows? So the other thing is the assay was, when you, when you do an assay, you have to validate it. So you test for specificity, accuracy, reproducibility, things like that. And now remember back to that reference standard that I said, the reference standard is a pure part of the drug that you test against. You know what you're testing against. You know the chemical structure or the protein sequence of that drug that you're testing against. In this document right here, since no, this, and this is from seven twenty one, okay, this is from seven twenty one, twenty one, this was updated last July. Since no quantified virus isolates of the two thousand nineteen N code were available or the C T, C D C, the use of the platform that Tesla's developed, this study was conducted with characterized stock of in vitro transcribed pooling RNA gene code bank, and then they give it on them. If they had the sequence, why did they have to use the gene code bank? What, what did they use to develop this? They used a specific sequence. Who's the same that gets from COVID normally do a test for the virus, right? You use the virus to develop your assay. Now, since I said this was seven twenty one, right? Why haven't they taken the assay and revalidated the actual isolated virus, right? You think they would isolate the virus like that. Why haven't they gone back and tested the P C R test with the actual virus? I, I don't know. I'm not sure. Also, the probes that they use in the P C R test. So they have to have these probes that break down the sample and then those probes illuminate when the sample goes through the assay. And the stronger the illumination, brighter the assay gets, more positive it is obviously. So those probes that they use, what did they use to develop those probes? Well, they used, diagnostic panel was evaluated against eight hundred thirty one thousand nine hundred ten recent high quality genome sequences available in the global initiative on sharing all influenza data. So again, they used sequences from a database, but not the actual virus to detect, to test against. Not once in this document do they mention viral isolates anywhere as part of the assay developed. They can't tell you, they, if you're testing for the Delta virus, they can't tell you that. They use computer-based in silico analysis. So that's basically a computer-based assay to test for specificity. And for the specificity testing, they use the bat SARS COVID virus to test for that, not the real virus. What I'm trying to say here basically is that whatever testing procedures you guys decide upon, you're going to be using something that's almost completely inaccurate test. I cannot take this as part of the FDA to, to, as part of my drug application to the FDA. I've worked on in vitro diagnostics, so you can test for HER2 and things like that for cancer and BRCA genes and stuff like that as part of the continuing diagnostic. I could not take this to the FDA and say, here's my drug, please let me use this in the public or even let me test in clinical trials. They'll say, you don't have enough information. Why didn't you use the HER2 gene to actually develop your assay? Why didn't you use the BRCA gene to develop your assay? What I'm trying to say is that you're going to implement stuff. We already have very hokey type of yellow, red, green type of thing from the state. I'm sorry. It's such a small town, we're going to be in red. Modern needs, what, eight kids to test positive before it goes, because teachers or kids test positive before the school gets closed, it's in red state. I mean, you're going to be using something totally inaccurate. Pool, they even saying here, they have a special process for doing pool and that's even more inaccurate than the other one. And the thing I have to say about the antibody test is that's actually more accurate because that will actually tell you if a person has been exposed and is developing antibodies against the virus, then it is some piece of little RNA that's floating in the body from the coronavirus that are out there. You guys do what you all with this information? I hope I gave some information to you to make you think about this, but to make some testing, to make decisions off of and to use this, I think it's crazy and, you know, hey, let the kids go to school, you know? The presentation on that, appreciate it. Anybody else from the public who might have a big statement? Peter, go ahead.
I'm Peter DeBryan, co-founder of the Newers, and I have been on this school board before, so I understand that you guys are in a hot seat, but, um, I have a little familiarity with what happened to boarding school in Massachusetts last year where they required the booster testing. And there were some smart kids running it and I started asking questions about what we do with false positives and my critical fit is to answer from the authority and I can see they worked out what they were going to do. And the thing is, they were required, if they had a positive case, to quarantine the kid in the supporting school. You don't want to create what you might call a human problem or some blood problem or whatever in that. So they, um, they worked really hard in having that quarantine situation be as short as possible until it could be tested, ensured that anybody tested and so on. So, um, anyway, when they found it, see how they got a few number of positives, but they were all false in terms of quickly verified and they were testing and whatever. So, um, I think what I would encourage you to do is to dig a little bit more into this P C R testing because the way you're talking about asymptomatic cases and giving more weight to the P C R versus the rapid test and so on. It's my understanding that the C D C's is terminating the P C R test as a game of the year and pushing and now pushing the labs to use alternate tests that have some similarities that don't have perhaps the false positive rate thing. And I would assume that a bunch of you are familiar with the cycle threshold issue on generally false positives on the P C R test. If you aren't, I can provide you with the information to back it up, including one by the famous stuff that Vouching himself, seven to forty, he's been used a lot of those places. So, um, I think that you need to focus, you, you can do a lot of harm to the kids who get the false positive that I'd work really, really hard to avoid that and attaching the stigma or, I mean, a lot of kids at that age, don't be, I mean, there's enough pressure and social games that happen in the community. I remember it from my time, you don't need to have them. So this is a really tricky part.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Price and I'm going to be a junior at St. Huguen. I'm going to be talking about the agenda item that's relating to athletics. So this proposed testing, weekly mandatory COVID testing for athletes puts an unnecessary burden of time and stress on athletes and on other students involved in extracurricular activities. This testing just for athletes assumes that these students pose a greater risk to the community than anybody else. Last year, although on a modified schedule, teams met, practiced and competed, positive cases among athletes, um, when they happened, were managed and contained without posing a risk to the rest of the school community. Adding in mandatory testing this year would be inconvenient, uncomfortable and stressful. Over the past year and a half, we've dealt with enough added stressors and burdens. To ask us to put up with this testing when the benefit is questionable at best is exceedingly unfair. Thank you for your consideration. We all there, we all at Amherst? So I'm Debra, I'm a junior at St. Huguen. Um, and I believe it's not the correct decision for student athletes to take literally COVID tests in order to participate in sports. Reason behind this is, is for, for I and I would presume many others use sports as a core way to maintain our mental and physical health. Though with this imposed constant testing, it will become much more likely for athletes to obtain false positive tests, which will in turn, um, take us out of our sports along with our other important connection of school and away for the late pointing time. And just overall will put much more stress and on students that we don't need. And thank you for your consideration.
Who else would like to address the board, please?
Hey, thank you. I'm Chris Ager for Edward Ryan Post and, uh, thank you all for your deliberations. I know how hard it can be. I sat in your chair in a different town a few years ago. I, I would just like to encourage you to, to consider the non-COVID effects on the health of students and many of them lost a year of their youth. And if we don't have to inject crippling concern about COVID and the fear, if we don't need to inject that, then I think we should do everything we can not to inject additional fear and concern that's not warranted. F D R, we are under attack by Japan, World War. The only thing we have is fear itself. Yes, people can get sick, but young people aren't getting sick very much. And when they do, it's, it's not very severe. So there's more harm potential by the COVID reaction than COVID itself. So I'd just like to ask you to consider that because you go forward and I have a lot of confidence in this rule and with those two students, I, I think you're doing a great job if that's an indication of what you're doing here. So thank you.
All right. So this is really hard for you to do.
Before you begin, can I even, you know, the rest?
Sure, yeah. My name is Ashley. I'm from Amherst. My son is three and I strongly believe that if you guys start enforcing things, then I will impose on him and every other kid that I leave at Kent to not be enforced to do things that they don't want to do. Also, the P C R test, it is sterilized with ethylene oxide. Ethylene oxide is, um, very toxic to kids. It, it increases the risk for lymphoblastic cancer and females for breast cancer. So you guys are going to take your athletes and you're going to test them and they're probably the healthiest ones in Amherst and you're going to give them more chance to get cancer. That to me shouldn't even be a question and it shouldn't even be a thought. So, sorry.
Hi, I'm Fiona. I live in Amherst. Um, I'm going to be going to the Derrickville next year, but I still do play sports here. Um, I guess my first question, I'm going to be asking you this. I did not know that this meeting was going on until about an hour before it started and I didn't even know what it was about until I got in the car. But since it does affect me, I am curious, um, how would that work with me because I am attending a different school, but I'm still going to be an athlete here. Would I be tested or like if this was enforced? I'm probably like the only case of this, but, yes, sir?
Don't have the answer. Personally, I don't have the answer. That's an interesting case. Try to imagine all, all different scenarios and how different things can play out, play logic with it, but you know, that's, you know, a very good question. I don't, you don't, I don't have an answer. Does anyone else have something to prop up? I, I don't know, but, but the question is written down on my notes and if there is one, we will research and present it.
Okay, awesome. Adam, do you have an idea of how many other students might be homeschooled or going private school and using COVID in sports?
It's a decent, it's a decent number, yeah. It's a fair number.
You're not alone.
Yeah, no, I was just curious. Um, otherwise, I think you guys do what you want to do. I was just curious.
Anybody else like to address the board?
I just want to say something. I am an advocate on this, by the way.
Great, awesome. Thanks for stepping up.
We have our Amherst senior. I think, I, I just want to say you guys have great points. I know this is not your area, but it is our area. Um, I've been a pharmacovigilant scientist for twenty years, which means my job is analyzing causality of adverse events to a drug. So I have an analytical mind and there's a lot I could talk about. He covered the testing. I think the testing, for example, once a week, you're not going to be playing any game because one student, two students will test positive on a Monday. They went all weekend wherever, you know, to the lake, to wherever. And then the whole team has to quarantine, right? Is that correct? Because if we're talking about, and you are absolutely correct, there is no asymptomatic spread, that they know that now. A year ago, we didn't know, they know that now. So blanket testing, even voluntary, is nonsense, absolute nonsense, because as you heard, the tests don't test anything. High false positives, high false negatives. So you're going to, you're, you're going to have your students and you've heard the lovely kids who are athletes, athletes say it's going to add stress and it's nonsense. A better, I have a proposal though, because I think we need to go back to, because it's been a year, it's not March twenty twenty, when I was freaked out about COVID. I'm no longer freaked out about COVID. It's really a fluke. And if your vitamin D levels are in the mid-range, your chances of getting very sick are zero because now we have studies like retrospective looking at moderate to severe COVID outcomes. Ninety-four percent of those people who have moderate to severe outcomes in COVID have very low vitamin D. So the logic would be supplement, give your kids vitamin D, they won't get sick, right? But my, my request is rather than testing, fever check before a game of practice. Some kids don't know they're sick, right? You tell them you feel a little warm, they have a fever. They have a fever, that's a sign of infection, send them home, come to school, maybe a fever check, right? And I do agree, you have to let parents of parents to not send their kids sick. But these, I also have a huge issue with the masks. I mean, this is about testing here, but the masks are a whole nother issue. There was a study out this week. Infant to three years old had a 22-point IQs up in cognition. They went from 105, and I know you're wondering how to test the babies, they do. Hundred and five IQ to seventy-nine. IQs in the low seventies mean they will require help. They have no, they will be literally like a mild case of cerebral palsy. So putting these masks on little kids is criminal. Because as you've heard, they don't get COVID. So we as adults need to put our fear aside and quit projecting it on the little people who don't even get it. Actually, you can have COVID. Do you realize that? You're barking up here, don't mean to attack you. But this is how, you admitted when you started, this is not my area. Clearly, you're sitting here sick, talking about testing, when you yourself came sick and it could be COVID. So drop the masks, you know, just let people do what they want. Some kids want to wear masks, fine, wear a mask. But testing is a stigma when it's unnecessary and it's not going to tell you anything. We need to go back to old school measures, fever. Because I have to say, we've been going out to dinner since this all began. No masks, and I know the horror, right? We're just spreading it everywhere. We also haven't been sick. Just last weekend, we go to a restaurant that never really enforced masks. I mean, the employees were on. We walk in, there's a woman leaving, she's not masked on, she's like, oh my God. She goes huddled by the hand sanitizer. And I'm thinking, no one knows about infectious disease control or spread. She just sat in a restaurant. If COVID was so deadly, you would not be eating in a restaurant at all. The waiters touch the glass, touch the table, touch, pick up the glass, bring it to you over here. They touch your food plate. You're laughing, touching, spitting. It's not like that. Nor a virus, you need to shut everything down. That is so air-worn. This is not that. So to treat it a year, over a year later, like it's some bubonic plague is just so misguided and it's wrong. So I hope you got some insight from us. Because this is, the true picture of COVID is not scary. And I think we need to bring your level down for our children. Because you really did, not intentionally, but last year was hard. I mean, we had a seventh grader, I called you about it, commit suicide. There's been a 50% increase in suicide in teens because of COVID. And now, I didn't know, my two kids, one of the freshmen was a senior, they cannot, my freshman was crying, I don't want this anymore. Why are they doing this? It's not based in science at all. So stop it. And my concern is you're getting money for it. Can we use the money for something else or say goodbye to the money? Because we pay a hell of a lot of taxes. And I don't know why it's all about the money all the time. You need to stop hurting these kids. Because your point is it's not just about the virus, it's about the mental, what you've done. And to hear a study that three-year-olds have dropped an IQ to the seventies. They don't know if that's reversible. Do you understand that? They don't know. But you cover this and then they can't see Qs and they're in elementary school and they can't play with their friends because they're going to kill grandma, which by the way, grandma's vaccinated. So they were never little vectors, but they're certainly not going to get anybody sick now. So stop it. That's my request. Stop it. Because you aren't the experts. Actually, I am. I worked three months on a COVID vaccine in the safety department. And I quit because the adverse events were so horrific in very healthy people that I couldn't do it anymore. Any questions? I'm happy to answer them, but I hope, I'm going to be speaking Thursday, obviously. I can't keep it in, I'll shut air. Because these kids, these kids, and I don't think you have any bad intentions, but I just think you're misinformed. Because what's coming out, it's sad to see very smart people be terrified of something that's so not scary.
Hello, my name is Frank Fritz, Amherst. And I have a question for you is what problem are you trying to solve? Anybody?
I'll think. I'll try. The problem I solve is I don't want us to have to go back to COVID in a way, shape, or form. I want the kids to attend school and be instructed first.
That's the problem, an open school. And what other problem are you trying to solve besides any remote schooling? Are there any problems I can solve besides the remote schooling? Open the school without a problem. No masks, no testing. That's all in the school. Any other problems? Is anyone trying to save children? The procedures, design, solve problems. Are you trying to solve a problem here? I'm actually surprised it's quiet. I was expecting response similar to what I suggested. Trying to save children? You're not. You know children aren't at risk for this? You know that? You know schools are not a place of danger for our children? You know all this and you're still thinking about making your face cover? Homemade, like with glitter on it?
And don't get washed?
Are you really working on forcing medications on kids? Because you want it in a remote school? That's what you're here for? In a remote school? You're not, are you trying to solve any problems here? Why are you afraid to speak? Why are you afraid to speak? What problem are you solving?
Oh, we're gonna check. It's a fair question.
Yeah.
It is not our general policy to engage in dialogue here. And I don't need to put you off. I mean, rhetorical questions are difficult.
Sorry, I was on your phone.
Yes, fair enough. I think Steve had a fair answer. The goal, our goal is to provide a clean, safe, and healthy learning environment for all students in an in-person setting. That is our goal. We have a threat, which is COVID-19. We have to handle it. Hold on. There's uncertainties about it. There's, there's some good news, there's some uncertainties. Some people are still getting sick. We want to guard against that. We have limited tools to do so. And so we are discussing whether or not this one particular tool is something that we want to add to our toolbox. Okay, masks are in the toolbox. Like you, one of the public said, that is going to be a large discussion about reopening with these traditional tools in two days from now. This discussion is really about whether we are going to incorporate this in our toolbox or not. And, and, and that's it for the ultimate goal of keeping school open and keeping it a healthy, clean, safe learning environment, which is our duty under the law, under the National Education Regulations. That's it.
Okay, so I just want to, I'm not trying to be smart. Your, your response to the question, what problem are we trying to solve by putting, by potentially adding a stool to the box? Your response is we're trying to create a safe and healthy environment for students.
That's our duty under the law.
That's what I'm trying to solve. Right now, the fear is we may not have a safe environment for students, right?
Well, the concern is that if you, the hope is that if you're proactive as opposed to reactive, that you increase your chances of immediate involvement.
What problem are we solving? Because the problem now, we don't need even more tools. Is the problem now that kids are in danger in schools and you're open anyway?
This is why we're having this discussion tonight.
Well, I, I actually, a lot of ways.
Turn on, just a second. Not, any one of us as an individual can answer your question. We don't speak for the board. I'm not the board. He says individuals are not the board. We will make a decision about whether to table this issue, about whether to include this in the toolbox, about whether to ask further questions and have discussion later. And that, that is what the board will be. And they'll know what the board thinks about it. Okay, this is just the first time that this has been a tool that's been made available to us. And we deserve, we owe it to the public, we owe it to ourselves, we owe it to our community to at least have this discussion. And, and I appreciate all, I mean, I take notes, I'm a note taker. I appreciate what everyone has said. And, and it is part of the body of information that will consider during this decision. I don't know how much, we're simply to conclude it.
But that was a lot of words for a very simple response. And that's very nuanced trying to get away, I think, from the question. I still want to understand what problem I'm trying to solve. I understand the topic that you addressed, that you want to open new tool of the toolbox is helpful. But we need to understand what problem we're solving. And we just think through, is a tool that you're suggesting putting in helpful to the problem? Is the problem real? Do kids, K through 12, do kids K through 12 of Amherst pose any risk of death from COVID? Of population, of coughing, of, what are you trying to, we're not trying to cough in, we're trying to prevent death? What is the risk of death, students in Amherst from COVID? Is it the one in a million, CDC says it is, or a million of us, and kids in Amherst, if you want one death? You'll probably see a suicide this year. It's ridiculous, the policies come in phases, you'll see IQ drops. But I would like to solve those problems. I would like to solve problems of suicidal lockdowns. Let us solve the problems of IQ drops. Let us solve a lot of these problems. And I think the solution is in line with your primary objective of getting rid of remote school, to open schools. I've been terrified of COVID for a long time, until I finally had the data available. My, my kids aren't in danger, I'm not in any danger. My daughter missed her birthday because of the silly lockdown. I feel like a horrible situation, wherever my daughter's affected this. If you don't know what problem to solve, you don't have a fair, you can't enunciate problems, but right? You should be able to do that. And we should be able to think about what approach we're solving, we're doing to solve it. If masking is a tool against some problem, problem of 18-year-old kids, five-year-old kids dying of COVID. You should also show that masks work at such a thing. Show me how we stopped the spread in two weeks, you're the experts. Show me how masks have stopped transmission anywhere. Show me an area that has masks and no mask, and show me how the trends are different for cases of death. Because I can see there are deaths of the same everywhere I look. I look a lot. Show me that his testing is accurate. What was the error bar? How do you use that argument? What is the error bar? Do you believe on testing you're doing? What is the, you don't have any answers. It's frightening that this is the kind of community that's going to be suggesting severe interventions have no negative effects. You don't even know problem solving, you can't enunciate it. You can enunciate other questions, but you can enunciate this one. You couldn't enunciate what we are, how what we're doing or suggesting is helpful in any way. If there's no upside and there's no problem, I wonder why you're choosing this. I think it's the pressure from the TV you're watching. I think it's, it sounds like this is the only way to go. And I get it, peer pressure is weird. Like your kids, we're given not to do the peer pressure. It's hard. And I know you don't know this stuff. It's obvious, like those, as I said. And I understand how peer pressure works. I understand, we've all been in peer pressure at times. We've all grown up at some point and got rid of it. I don't know why you're doing what you're doing. I don't have an idea of your intentions. But I'm pretty concerned now that you couldn't declare what problem I'm trying to solve and how letting kids go to school without masks, let them make friends, let them see their teacher's face. There is no risk identified that these methods are solvent. So I know it's odd to ask people to be brave and do things that's done forever. Go to school during the flu. It's, it's odd, but it does seem brave, brave, brave. You guys can all be brave and butt against this peer pressure. Because there is no problem here and these actions aren't reducing any, any problem. So I hope that, you know, helps you think through the problem and you come to a, to the right position. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much.
I'm really in Amherst. I know in the past, there was a lot of unknowns. But I think since then, we have a lot more data to look at and we're spoken about it. And this is a new school year and I think we need a breath of fresh air. We don't need fear brought back in being, oh my God, am I going to be tested? Being an athlete is stressful enough from trying to do your studies, trying to do everything. And then to add this extra stress that may, they may be tested or not, it's just ridiculous. They need, the kids need to be mask-free. They need to be, it should be optional, but to have, and you guys are just up here, you know, you guys are doing your best. But to come and try to suggest a mandate and come up with all these new guidelines that seems like there's a lot of unknowns that you guys don't have the answers for. And to put it back on the athletes, it's ridiculous. So I say no way, and I stand up every day, I forget that. And what about the kids? My, I have six children and they need to be in school, they're in, and I sent them to school. They're like, what, we're going to school? What else? Yeah. They're in college and they're in the different schools, it's been throughout Amherst. And they want to go to school and they don't want to wear a mask. And they have so many friends who have psychological issues. And they can't see psychiatry because the waiting list is so high. The stress is so high in colleges and across the boards. Look at all the suicide we've had and not everything is rewarded. So I mean, to have, put more stress and even suggest this. It's like, we need fresh air, fresh air, no masks, no beer. And let the kids live and don't keep trying to threaten them with ridiculous things that are not even proven. Then keep, the CDC has gone back and said, no, bruh, 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 bruh. Backtrack so many different times. Like who is suffering? The children, the children. And the IQs are all down. This is, who's ridiculous? We need to stand up and stand up for the children now.
It's never about never getting sick either. Kids are going to get sick. By the way, with the mask, they're not getting any immunity. So, so how long are we going to keep the mask on so they don't get sick? I mean, they're going to get sick. That's the whole point of growing up and developing an immune system. About the kids.
Anybody else from the public? Laura, did you want to leave that statement in?
Okay. I have a statement from Maddie McPhee. She's a student who is student member of our board. And she wasn't, she's on vacation, but she sends a statement and that was repetitively testing every student that participates in extracurricular seems excessive, especially if they have no symptoms. I completely understand wanting to take extra precautions, but testing every single athlete seems extreme. Some of my peers have voiced concerns about when the testing would take place and how long it would take. If every athlete is getting tested, they are concerned it will take time out of their sports practice time or force their practices to be pushed later than they already have been with the later start times. I believe students would be willing to get tested if they have symptoms or if they've been around those with symptoms, so forcing weekly testing seems unnecessary.
And the testing should be between the kid and the doctor. I don't know why, do you test for flu or strep part of school ever? Those are awful, equally contagious. I mean, COVID is not different. So I, I'm concerned with especially at the elementary schools, testing outside of the presence of a parent. I mean, because what do you do if the kid's positive? Throw them in the gym until mom can get out of work? I mean, it's, the problems are enormous, ethically, legally, and just based on a disease. It's not, it's not, it's not indicated, so. Nice statement, Matt.
Okay, does anyone else from the public have anything to add? All right, we're going to close. Public comment for now. But trust me, I mean, you, you all have publicly emails, you can email the board. Something comes up and you want to make yourself heard, send us a message, please.
Thank, thank you all for this.
You're welcome. You're welcome. It's our duty to listen. Yeah, you had something to say. We both know. Yes. I know, I know, it's, yeah, well, that next one's going to be, anybody have any further, any further? I know, I know, yeah, well, that next one's gonna be, anybody have any further, any further issues to put out on the table? Any further opinions or comments or questions? My suggestion to us, is that we table the issue in terms of, meaning, we don't decide to, maybe this sounds like an answer to people. My thinking is, is that, is a line along, is to come to a result that's along the lines of, of, I think it was Steve who said something like, well, this is something that we could do with future data warrants, this is, or Stephanie was saying, is this, is this something that could be, could be evaluated in future? If we were on the precipice of closing the schools down, we want to come back and have the discussion and plug that into our toolbox at that time, and under those circumstances, seems sensible. Rather than taking a vote to eliminate it completely at this time, that, that's my personal thought. Does anybody think differently, materially different about that as a, as a course of action?
It seems a little like semantics, like if we take a vote to eliminate it right now, we can always take another vote later, say we want it. I don't think we should, I think we should be decisive about it, if there's strong enough parent. I mean, there's, there's no one here saying, please do this. So if, if there was one parent here saying.
Actually, not that.
If there was one parent here saying, hey, we really want this, then I have, I have a different, because I don't want to ignore somebody that they're not here, they didn't email us, I don't think people want this. And we do still have the ability to go get the test, have the doctor, so we're not saying they can't have tests.
Yes, Steve. Christie's point. Adam, you did a survey, didn't you? Of various mitigation options. In the spring. In spring? Was this a question? There wasn't one point of Facebook. Our school surveyed parents, whether they would be open to testing, and the majority said yes at the time.
Well, we entertain a motion, Christie, you want to make a motion, based on your own concept?
I make a motion that we do not proceed with any mandatory testing.
At this time?
At this time.
Go ahead, yeah, yeah, go ahead. Show hands, in support of, in support of the motion. For members kind of short notice to this, for having this discussion, I think it was really important for us to have a clear path forward, above all else, appreciate the members of the public expressing your views, even if it makes you nervous sometimes to do so. It's really important that we, that we hear you, and we do, okay? And with that, yes.
Appreciate everyone who's speaking that as well. But I also want to throw the way, something. Kind of situation, I don't think now is the time to say anything, but, you know, give us a month or so. You know, I'm not saying we don't want to, like, Texas or Florida, I'm not considering that at all. But I think, you know, we're not doing our jobs if we don't, at some point, we'll get the trend on and see what's occurring.
Yeah, I, I think Christie's point is well taken. We make this decision now and not proceed. There's nothing stopping us at any time, convene a meeting and make a decision to proceed. But, so our decision's made, but I think, I think your point is well taken, and it's consistent with support of the board. Yes, Adam?
Just wanted to speak on behalf of the reopening task force, so I'm the one that brought this forward as a concept, because it was available to us at first blush, seems to make some sense. There's a challenge in the community, I'd like some data to track it, so we can make informed decisions about what we do about that. But we went through the process with our task force, and we checked in with the parent subgroup, with teachers, with administrators, with nurses, all of those folks, and I heard from a lot of parents in our community as well. And to be clear about the survey this spring, Steve, it wasn't clear whether it was pool testing or what kind of testing, it was just, shouldn't be relied upon. I think what should be relied upon now is, our task force had lukewarm support for this concept at best, and I've taken my support away from it, I don't support what was brought forward. Would I, would I feel as if our school is safer if we had that data point? Yeah, I would, I would feel that we would have, we would have that, but our community clearly doesn't support that. For that reason, that's why my opinion about it has changed. I think the task force deserves some recognition in helping to represent the different stakeholders that are largely representative of what we heard from this group of people here tonight. And this, what they represented is representative of what I've heard in my email inbox. I think most of you have heard from the people that have been shouting as well, so. I just want, the, the process of open deliberations about ways to combat this, I think is a positive thing. It doesn't mean we have all the answers at the beginning, so having this meeting, having a task force that started down one path, goes a different way, that's how we're going to have to work through these issues as they continue with our communities, continuing to hear from folks, to make decisions that not only are based in the science that we have, dubious as it may be at times, in our community's best interests, as governed and as weighed by the people who present their opinions to us. So I support the chair calling this meeting, and also support the decision of this board to say this is not the right thing for our community at this time.
Thanks, Adam. Any parting comments before we adjourn? Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Anybody second that? All in favor? We are adjourned.